All right, good evening, everyone. It's time to start on board meeting. Let's all rise. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the government of Portland. For its citizens, for its religion, and under God, the innocent, for liberty, just justice, and all of them.
Right, um, so I have a couple additions to the agenda today. I need to add three things if I could. Between ten and eleven, the new number eleven is going to be resolution, a waiver of bid requirement. It should be in all the packets, but we needed to add a labor of bid requirements for a particular purchase we're doing for public works. That's number eleven. New number twelve. I'm looking for a motion for a power up drug and alcohol education workshop that we'll be doing at the high school, middle school in September. It's been set up. There's some information I want to pass on to you, but we'll be using some funds that we haven't used in a while to fund this thing. So I want to deliver one on that. That's number twelve. And then old number eleven becomes thirteen, and then add one all the way down line fourteen for refunds, fifteen for status. Public comment sixteen, seventeen will be board of selectmen general information informal discussion. Eighteen follow up items and a new number nineteen executive session for contract renewal lease of town owned land. And then number twenty adjourn meeting. Those are the only added additions I have. With those changes, like a motion for the agenda tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Second it. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, motion passes. Has everyone looked at the minutes from the July sixteenth meeting? Yeah, I noticed no anything unusual with all final.
And we we move the regular minutes of July sixteenth second.
Second by Rick. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstention, motion passes. Correspondence and communication, just a couple of things. I'm gonna start off with a feel good. I got a call about a week ago from the daughter of Robert Lindquist, a former Portland resident who turns one hundred years old as of the second day of August of this of this year. She had called and said that Bob's family moved to town at a young age, lived in a number of locations throughout town. Waverly Avenue Fairview Street, Fairview Street, I guess his parents built the house on Highland Avenue. He used to play on the frozen river, Connecticut River back then when we had winters. Roasted potatoes on the riverbank and always was ready with his trusty pocket knife. At eighteen, Bob enlisted in the Navy, serving in the Pacific Front during the end of World War Two on a PT boat one oh five. Known for its speed and maneuverability, he pursued college education. He utilized the GI Bill to attend Uppsala College in New Jersey. Graduated in nineteen fifty, married with three kids, had a long and productive life, but he's moved out of town since then, but in Florida where he is now, he absolutely loves Portland, talks about it all the time. And that prompted his daughter to call up and say, we'd love to do a proclamation. So I've done a proclamation for him. I've read some of it. We will send a signed copy to him in the next couple of days or so, but I've given everyone a copy of that. I too want to live to a hundred. As long as I can be living to a hundred.
Yeah, right.
Um, but anyways, I thought that was really good and memories, good memories made by Bob back then and continue to be made now for those residents in town, but that was great. Couple other things, couple other uh, city of Middletown, once a month gives us updates on what we're doing for usage. Last month in July, Portland police received four hundred and sixty three calls for the month. The average is five oh three every month. So a little bit down, part of it is summer. They have a slight decrease in calls over the summer. Fire department was about equal at seventy nine. The average is sixty eight calls for the fire department. In Portland overall, had fourteen eighty one total calls in to their service at one point during the month. Our average is two hundred and twelve a month, so pretty consistent. As everyone knows, Middletown does the does a call center for us. So when someone calls nine one one, someone calls police department. And they're they help to keep us safe and we work very well with it, so. That is good. Next issue. I should have sent a message out to everyone. We have scheduled a special joint meeting with the Board Board of Education in the Strategic Capital Improvements Committee for Tuesday, August twenty sixth at seven PM. That's the best date that we can get. I hope everyone can make it that night. I think one person may not be able to make it. But we will, the Strategic Capital Improvements Committee will present to us their suggestion, their report. And we'll have a, I'm sure lively discussion about that that night, so.
You never gonna get that report in advance of that meeting? I would certainly hope so.
Um, I would imagine so too.
I would imagine so, but that doesn't mean.
I will, I will double check my, from what I've heard from Dr. Riley. Dr. Britten, excuse me, a little flashback. That's expected. So I will, I will, I will make sure.
Yeah, just it would be good to have some time to really look at it.
Absolutely.
If we're gonna sit in a meeting and discuss it.
I agree. I agree. And they covered a lot. And this is the
Oh, yeah, there's a lot there.
Multiple meetings, so they digested a lot of information. I received a letter from the Chatham Health District on August fourth. The Chatham Health District notified that there was a positive test for a mosquito captured in the Raymond Brook Marsh in Hebron for West Nile, West Nile virus. It's been detectable since nineteen ninety nine. As long as you're doing the regular prevention steps for mosquito bites, minimizing time outside, using DEET and other anti mosquito sprays. Wearing, you know, shoes, socks, long pants, etc. That will help mitigate it. It's something controllable, but just be aware of that. They notify us whenever they do find Western Al virus positive, so. On the good news money front. Um, as all you know, Kerma is the one that does our municipal insurance, keeps us safe, protects us. We will be getting, as we sometimes do, a check from Kerma this Friday for, as a member of that organization. It's a, it's a decent one this year, over forty thousand, but it shows that, that we've done a good job in mitigating issues that would cost money for the town, and that's nice when money comes into the town for doing the right thing. So that is happening this Friday. If anyone, anyone of the selectmen want to join me at ten o'clock, they'll be there with the big check at the town hall. What's that?
Twenty second. Which meeting? Twenty seconds Friday, August twenty second.
Um, it's, are you sure? I had it this Friday, but I could be wrong. We're not talking loud enough?
I was just questioning what the twenty second is a Friday to help Michael figure out if he had it right for a meeting.
They'll have a date and a letter.
Yeah, it doesn't. I had it in my calendar for Friday, but I'll let everyone know. I have it for this Friday, so. I will let everyone know on that. Um, I received another letter from, from a resident regarding Middle Hattam Road and Penfield Hill. There was issues with speeding on Middle Hattam Road and the intersection there. They deemed as dangerous in terms of how the stop sign is set up. I've had Michael Streena go out there and take a look at that. We're considering adding a stop sign at one point right near to where the trail crosses there. Believe on the east side, but we're looking at that right now and it's something to mitigate traffic. I will keep everyone posted, but I do appreciate when the residents do call in with concerns about that. Sometimes traffic conditions change and maybe what was one safe may involve more cars rooting on that road, so.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
So I would have out there. And there's only there's only one stop sign out where sort of three roads come together.
Right.
And the way the stop sign is positioned on Penfield Hill, like if you're coming on Middle Hattam Road, you don't even know there's a stop sign there.
Yeah.
So and it gets a fair amount of traffic. I think it should almost be a three way stop. Especially with the rail trail, like just a hundred, one hundred feet down the road. I think the logic when it first went, when the stop sign, the solo stop sign went in was that Middle Hattam Road is kind of the through road and Penfield Hill end, so we'll just have a stop sign at the end of Penfield Hill, but really I think the traffic on Middle Hattam should have to stop there because it is, it is. I've often wondered why, and when I was on board of selectmen, five, six years ago, I brought it up and it I don't know, it didn't go anywhere, but if somebody else is complaining.
Yeah, someone else mentioned that and, and I think, I think it's a legitimate concern. When, when there's traffic on sixty six, that's the route, that's the route that they, they get people to go down.
Right.
So there is concerns. I talked to Jim a little bit about as well. You had, you had another feeling about that as well.
Well, I think at an absolute minimum, one of the biggest concerns is because of where the stop sign is located on Penfield. People stop and then they basically just charge into the intersection.
There's no sightline.
And so at an absolute minimum, I think we need to look at moving that stop sign further down and maybe putting a stop bar or something, you know, right in the right in the road, a good line. So that people know they have to stop before they enter because that's the biggest hazard I've seen.
Right.
Is you're coming down that road and you've got the, you've got the right of way, it's a throughway.
Yeah, right.
As a continuation of the road and people come from Penfield and they just charge through the stop sign without stopping. And there's no good sightline to, to, to prevent that.
Right. One, one of the things that Mike said as well is we really need to do something with that road. We need to kind of close it off so it, it kind of tees like a normal road instead of having it so wide. So stop sign is right at the intersection. So it's worth exploring. I think in the meantime, I think it's worth again, looking at that, but at least slowing traffic down there, especially near the trail where it crosses.
Other thing with the trail. Boy, if ever there was a place where we should have those lit up trail crossing, like they somebody put up on Breezy Corner.
Yes.
That's could really use that down there on Middle Hattam.
See, I, I, I agree with that, especially because both both of the entrances, both of the rail trails, both come down in an angle. So if somebody's biking and they're coming down, they're coming downhill onto that, onto, to cross the road.
Yep.
From both directions, so.
Yeah, I, I think it definitely deserves consideration, so I'll keep everyone posted. We just want to make it safer for everyone. There's a lot of traffic there. And again, with the trail getting more and more popular, we got to make it safe as we can, so I will follow up. I'll keep everyone posted on that. Uh, our good friend Andy Bauer stopped by about a week ago, talking about a program where folks in town can get a home energy assessment for their homes for free to the end of August, August thirty first. It's a program that they're doing right now. I told them that we would support it. We put a letter out to residents to let them know about this. I'll post it on our, on our, our town, town website. But it does offer folks a chance to get that. A lot of these solar incentives and others are going away. But EverSource is trying to keep that home energy audit program going strong, so it's a program that is offered to all Portland residents to the end of the month. So what normally costs seventy five bucks is now free. It's worthwhile. I signed up for it in our new house. They had one done in my home about five or six years ago. I want to get another one done to just see if we're as efficient as possible, so. It's free, it saves money and they do a lot of stuff, so it's a great program. Has anyone here at this table had a home energy audit?
Years ago.
Yeah, years ago.
Years ago.
Long enough ago that the technology they were replacing light bulbs, so it was CFL, not LED.
Might be a good idea to do it again.
Do it again, exactly. It does not hurt, does not hurt. A couple of other things. There is a back to school backpack and supply event at the Portland Food Bank on August eighteenth, twenty first and twenty fifth. A pickup date between nine and twelve AM. I will post more details about this, but it's back to school time. And there are different ways of getting supplies for residents if they need that. I'll make sure this is posted so everyone can see that on the town page. Two other things. I don't know if, if folks know, but Marilyn McGrath years ago started a community garden at Bransfield Park. She sent a letter into the town about a week or so, talking about how that park has really generated a lot of interest from other residents in town that have, you know, planted there, you know, done things there. And it really kind of brought the community together. So one part of her letter goes, we're proud, we're proud and Portland should be also proud. It's what happens when various factors of the community, government residents and local businesses work together in order to build something that benefits the community. It was signed by the master gardeners Jill Benson, Kathy Leslie and Debbie D. These guys are things where these folks are getting together and doing something good and making it a better town are what we need more of, so. I just congratulate those folks that do a lot of this for free, for town property, senior center, police, etc. They're out there keeping it clean, making it pretty for the town, so God bless them. And one last thing. I get a number of calls from or emails from residents about issues they have with neighbors for various types. We cover some of them here. But I also get letters with positives, so I've gotten more letters lately about things going on in town. The various activities that the Parks and Rec Department offers for kids and families, and it's been particularly busy with those calls, so. Shout out to Parks and Rec for what they're doing, the programs that they have. They're affordable. I think they've got the highest capacity so far over the last couple of years in terms of programs, so shout out to Andy and his team for doing a lot of good stuff. The road races we've had, the running programs, etc. So it's been a good summer. There's been a lot of good things, so. Again, a number of residents have called and, and let us know that there happened with that, so. Nice to see. Again, we need more of that, so.
Well, and I think, I think you see residents voting with the, you know, they're showing the confidence to come back and do the camps and such again.
Absolutely.
I think we had a period, especially with COVID, where the camps were not running on a steady basis. And we lost some folks because of that. We lost some of the, the population. And I think he's building that back, which is really
Yeah, it's great. It's great to see. And I shout out real quickly for the concert series. I missed the last concert, last night, the fourth one. Was it Small Town Roots?
Great, great, great concert, probably five to six hundred people in the park. And it's nice. It wasn't a hundred degrees.
No, it was nice.
It was, it was a nice, nice night, nice little breeze. It was great.
All right.
Uh, just a quick PSA for Seventies Project, you know, last concert next week.
Next week, great. Make the weather good.
I will put the request in, we'll see.
Perfect. All right. That's all I have for communication and correspondence, public comments. Come on up. Welcome. Absolutely.
But you state your name and address?
I state your name and address.
Okay, I'm Debbie Law, eighteen Belcourt. Thank you. I decided not to plan what I was gonna say because I'm, I've read that that's what you're supposed to do, so. I've been taking care of to the best of my ability, the grounds here at the Bugs Forsman Building. Like, for example, on the way in, there was a big paper plate laying in the front and I picked that up and threw it out. And I'm gonna be sixty two in a few weeks. I have a big backyard with a lot of issues myself. And I cannot do it anymore. I just cannot. I get up at four o'clock in the morning to beat the sun because I'm trying to avoid as much sun damage as I can. And like it interferes with the quality of my life. If I could do it and not get sun damage, I actually love the work. And I love that kids drive by and they, in the school bus and they see me picking up cigarette butts and they see me tending to the flowers. You know, I love that kids see that, but I can't do it anymore. I just can't. I never got married. I never had children, other than my two nieces and my nephews. This is the most important thing to me. I never bothered the town guys to do much, but last year I never bothered the town guys to do much, but last year, and this will explain everything, they are inundated. If they just picked up cigarette butts, that would be a full-time job. But last year I asked if they could put a little mulch by the police sign and the man was so nice. I don't, I know who it is, but you know, doesn't matter. He said, oh no, we can't do that. We're getting the schools ready, the grounds ready for the schools. And I thought to myself, my God, of all the buildings in the world that should be ready on the first day of school, it should be our police department. There's a police plaque, there's a, a, a fire plaque, there's two military plaques. I know a lot of attention goes into Town Hall, but this is on Main Street and you can't deny that those plaques are there. You can't deny that the police work here. I am imploring you, I don't want to be, and I, I, I've um, like already pulled up a lot of things. I'm trying to leave it exactly as I found it. And I have like a birdbath out there and two turtles and a little angel in the back. I'm taking those all home, not out of spite, but I don't want it to be an overgrown mess to have like little chachis laying around too. I am imploring you, I don't care what we have to do to be creative, put an ad in the paper. Can you do it better than a sixty-two-year-old woman? You know, we always have Eagle Scouts doing like another gazebo. We don't, the world does not need another gazebo. Why can't we make it an annual project for some Eagle Scout to get out there and do what I've done for ten years? And every time I back off, it becomes an overgrown mess and then I give in and start again, but I just can't do it anymore. I just can't. But it can't go back to what it was. It just can't. The plaques get all overgrown, there's cigarette butts all over the place, there's trash all over the place. How much longer do I have? Tell me. I think it's five-minute limit, right? You know, what other job in the world do you go to work and you just might get shot at because you're in your car, you're in a uniform? I know Portland is a very relatively mild town, but you know, sandy hooks happen everywhere. A domestic issue can happen in Greenwich, it can happen in the, you know, it used to be just the Bronx. That's not the case anymore. It's everywhere. And it just, it's breaking my heart that I know when I stop taking care of it, it's going to become an overgrown mess again. And I am imploring you, get some organization on it, you know, even if it's a yearly thing, like the Rotary Club one year, the Lions Club one year. I really don't care if you advertise, can you do it better than a sixty-two-year-old, a hundred and twelve-pound woman? Can you do that? You know, I really don't care what you have to do, but they should not walk out of the building and have cigarette butts on the floor and trash. And that plate, I'm sorry, that plate would have been there for quite a while had I not picked it up. And it's my privilege and my, uh, like, if you could put a dome over it and I could do it without the sun.
Right.
I would do it. So I'm just imploring you, it, it, it should be pristine. This building of all buildings should be pristine, plus it's a landmark building.
Just so people can hear you.
Sorry.
Oh, no, 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 no problem.
You know, plus it's a landmark building.
Right.
You know, come on. I mean, you know, I know like, you know, a police officer in Portland in some ways is a little cushier than a police officer in Manhattan or the Bronx. But the dangers are just the same. They really are. It's not much different and, you know, I don't think they get an exorbitant salary for what they do. I feel like the least this town could do is make sure there's not like cigarette butts on the military plaques. Like, what do people think? Nobody, you know, they don't disintegrate folks, you know, and I don't know, it's just, it's breaking my heart. If I could do it and not get sun damage, I would, because I love it, but I just can't.
Steph, I gotta say, um, I appreciate as well as the other folks in town that know what you do. Um, the work that you've done over the years. Um, I've heard your name multiple times in terms of how much you've done there.
Please, I appreciate it. I just wanted to get taken care of.
But it's noticed though, and, and I appreciate that. And there's others in town, uh, the, the group before, they also do work in town, and I think we could find people that will, will do that.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and make you proud, but uh, we appreciate what you're doing. You're right. The police have a hard job and we need to honor them.
Right.
Do what we can, and it's a very visible building right there on Main Street. You come into town, it's what you see, so I, 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 I value what you're saying.
August sixteenth is my last day. I'm going to cut back everything to the best of my ability and leave it in the best possible shape, but I just pray. Like, that's right up there, you know, with. You know, with a lot of other world things that are occurring, but you know, for, for a smaller thing and a more, you know, Portland thing.
Something we can do about.
Yeah, I really, you know, why not an Eagle Scout project for a year?
Yeah.
You know, one year, that's your Eagle Scout project. Make sure it's pristine.
Yeah.
There's military plaques here, there's a police plaque, there's fire plaques. Thank you very much.
Debbie, thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
You did great, by the way.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Anything online? Nothing? Great. Um, we get to come to our budget portion of the meeting tonight. I see Mr. Robinson back there. The full suit and tie, ready to give us a quick update. It obviously is beginning of the new fiscal year, so not much has happened.
Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening all. Yeah, today, uh, the new fiscal year has begun, so that's always a good thing here. Uh, we had some decent collections. So far for the month, um, there's some, uh, because the, there was a bunch of August first, there'll be some additional collections that you'll see come in in the next report. Um, so that we're, uh, started off the year pretty good with collections, that's good. Uh, tax office stayed open, um, till, uh, four on the Friday, uh, to, uh, you know, get. Allow people to get their taxes in, uh, before the, uh, interest is due, so that was great. Uh, quite a few people should, did take advantage of that and came in. Um. We, uh. The, uh, we'll start seeing some of the state payments come in, like they do, they, they come in throughout the year. Usually July and August, the state doesn't, uh, they're kind of crossing over and changing their year. So they don't necessarily make so many payments there. The, uh, bank, some of the bank statements for the month just came in, so we got to get those items posted, so. That's the revenue side and the expenses, just more or less we're starting the year off, um. The only thing I've seen lately, there's a, quite a few like repair items, so we'll, we'll keep watching that throughout the year. Um, but, um, you know, other than that, we're good, you know, got the year started off. And, uh, just waiting on some of the other invoices, the monthly invoices to come in. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom.
Eddie, Tom. Thank you very much, Tom. All right, uh, next agenda, I need to make it as a resolution on the contract to work with the P O C D. I have Dan here to kind of walk you, uh, walk you through real quick what it's about and why we're doing it. Um. Looking forward to it, excited about it. Lot of good things about to happen.
Uh, yeah, Dan, we're a town planner, so, um, this was budgeted back last year. It's for the annual P O C D update. It's. Uh, update that's done every ten years, is required by state statute. Um, if we were not to do, uh, the update, we would lose eligibility for certain state funding. Uh, I think it is important to do the P O C D, um. Uh, twenty sixteen's P O C, uh, one of the main focuses was Brainerd Place. That, that was accomplished. Um, so it's now time to work with the townspeople and get input from people in town as to, you know, what the aspirations for town are in the future. And what, what kind of can be the, the next planning goals, uh, for, for the town i- in moving forward, um. Personally, I guess professionally more likely, uh, you know, I, I would like to, to focus a lot on the riverfront redevelopment. Um, but it is important to get people's input and that's really, uh, what the whole P O C D is about. Um, so we went through an R F P process, uh, thank Mike, uh, for helping me out with that as well as Bob Ellsworth. I got to thank Tom, uh, as well, uh. As well with, uh, the contract language, uh, it's really essential that, uh, Kerry looks at it, but definitely Tom, uh, because Tom's input was, was very important in making sure. Uh, that we, we make certain changes that are beneficial and important for the town and, and he's, he's got the eye and the knowledge for that. Um, so, uh, through the R F P process, we did select, uh, one bidder who, who met our budget. It was, uh, Teich Planning, uh, Teiki Planning, which, which you guys are all very familiar with. Um, uh, the main head, uh, person that will work with it on that is Jeremy DeCarly. Uh, very experienced planner, uh, especially in the region. He knows the town well. Uh, he worked at the, uh, Rivercog. He was the planner in East Hampton. He was the director of development in Suddington as well. And, uh, he just moved to, to Teich last year, uh, to work on P O CDs full-time. So, uh, I'm excited to work with them. Uh, we're also going to leverage, uh, information, uh, that we get from the bar grant that we're running simultaneously. Um, so I, I'm looking forward to doing, doing this project, getting input from town, people and, and, and seeing where people want. Uh, seeing where people want town to go. So that, that's basically it in a nutshell. I can answer any questions if you have them.
Questions?
No. No, I mean, it, I mean, it's a critical, right? It, it, it's very important that we get this done, so I'm glad to see it moving forward.
Do we have a, do we have a committee staffed?
Uh, uh, so, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to take the reins. It's, it's ultimately, uh, kind of their baby a little bit, uh, so I think it's important, um, not only for the. The planning process itself, but also the implementation. Um, the more involved with they, they are in actually developing the plan, I think the more they'll be involved in the implementation. Now, we're keeping the same template, uh, as was done in twenty sixteen, so there's this strategic element and then there's an implementation element. Um, which I think is very helpful so that this plan isn't just done and stays on a shelf somewhere and ignored. Uh, you know, you want it to be used and, uh, the more good input we get, the more, uh, we'll be able to leverage it for different grants and things like that in the future.
So if people want to make input, do they come to planning and zoning meetings or will it be special meetings for this or?
So yeah, there's going to be, uh, a number of, of shretts, um, and, and, uh, times for the public to provide input. So, uh, and again, we're going to leverage the bar grant, uh, as well, uh, as that, an even larger sum of money. Um, to, to get the best plan and the best input we can from residents. So between the two of them. We'll have at least three public shretts. We're going to have, uh, you know, a, a survey go out to every single person in town, all the businesses. Um, so, so yeah, we're really going to seek public, uh, input, uh, as much as possible. And I've also, I met with Ellen, uh, Ellen Guilde and Meg Scada yesterday, uh, to try to, uh, get other, uh, concerned. Uh, townspeople involved as well to drum up support, uh, and to just, um, you know, get the word out there, uh, so people give us that input because we really want. Uh, people's input so that they have buy-in, so that things we do in the future, um, they're not surprised by it. They're like, where is this coming from? Um, you kind of want to get their input now and then you can point back to, you know, this is the P O C D process we went through. Uh, a little bit like Brainerd, you know, with the V C I report, um, you know. It's not totally, uh, laid out like that was originally envisioned, but, um, by and large, it's the same concept and the same vision.
When, when do you plan to have this, the plan done?
So there's this, uh, statutory requirement, uh, that we, we're done in March of twenty-six. That's a very aggressive timeline. Um. We initially wanted to roll out, uh, the R F P and the plan earlier, uh, but, uh. Unfortunate events, you know, that happened in town kind of, uh, backed up our time schedule. Uh, there is an extension possible. You can ask from, uh, O P M. Uh, I don't think that'll be necessary, but it's, it, it's, it's an option that is there. Um, there are. O P M would have to take action. Uh, for us to be penalized by any late P O C D. I think it'd be very unlikely that O P M would do this, especially if we have, uh, a plan in the works, a con, you know, contractor hired. Um, but the goal is to finish in March of twenty twenty-six. Um, I think that's, that's possible. It's an aggressive timeline, but it, it's, it's not undoable.
I think the timing's perfect too, with all the events we have going on, all the activities in town.
Yeah, it would've been tough to do some of the stuff in the summer. Uh, people. Uh, get, you know, more people on vacation and stuff like that, so, um, you know, it is a little difficult with the school year, but we're going to try to accommodate people's schedules. Uh, as best we can, uh, try to do a, you know, one meeting, uh, nighttime, maybe one meeting on a Saturday, something like that.
Got you. Good, good. Any other questions at this time? No, no, okay. Dan, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right, um, all right, who'd like to read the resolution? Anyone volunteer?
I'll do it. Um, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution, uh, dated August sixth, twenty twenty-five. It's titled Contract Agreement with the Teich Planning and Policy Group LLC. Plan of Conservation and Development, whereas the purpose of the Plan of Conservation Development is to improve and maintain the overall quality of life in Portland. Promote economic growth and prosperity, preserve and promote the character of Portland. And whereas the state of Connecticut requires that the town's plan of conservation and development, P O C D. Be updated every ten years in order to keep it a working document and for the town to remain eligible for many state grants. Whereas the town's P O C D was last updated in twenty sixteen, therefore an updated plan will be required in twenty twenty-six. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes first selectman Michael Pelton. To execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland. A contract with Teich Planning, Planning and Policy Group LLC, two fifteen East Main Street, suite number one, Vernon, Connecticut. Zero six zero six six for R F Q slash R F P, number two zero two five dash zero eight. Dash Plan of Conservation and Development. The total proposed contract is seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'll second it. Second by ten. Any further discussion?
I just, it is very critical that we get this done, so I'm great to see we're on board.
Yeah.
Quickly, you know, we've got a good plan going forward.
Very good. All right, great. All right, without further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Resolution passes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, Dan, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
All right. Next resolution is for a contract for, uh, awarding for police accreditation. Um, quick background on this, I think most people know that, um, the state passed, um. A law about two years ago that, uh, codified what each police department has to do for accreditation. They set three levels, uh, and deadlines for it. Uh, we've been looking for the right vendor to do that. We have found someone, uh, in this company, D P LLC. Uh, they competed with a number of others. We got three bids, uh, for various levels, uh. Uh, these folks, uh, will be able to get us all three tiers that we need to get done and complete it within about a year or so. Um, the pricing was excellent and their accreditation, um, is hitting what we need to get done, so. Um, does anyone have any questions before we read this?
Was this, uh, this in our budget?
Yes, it is. We, we budgeted actually a little bit more than this.
Okay.
So we, I could be budgeted closer to purity on this.
Well.
So, uh, we're saving some money. Which is even better.
Yeah.
All right, anyone want to read it?
I'll read it. What, do it then? Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, August sixth, twenty twenty-five, contract agreement with D P LLC. Police accreditation resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes first selectman Michael Pelton. To execute and deliver in the name of, on behalf of the Town of Portland. A professional consulting contract with D P LLC, P O Box seventeen, Middlefield, Connecticut, zero six four five five. To complete the required tier levels of certification of Portland Police Department. D P LLC provided the lowest responsible proposal for services before the change orders in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. Estimated time to complete the project, twelve months.
I'll second it. All right, second by Jim. Any further discussion? Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next one is for its regards, the, uh, the Riverfront Access Project. Um, quick history on this, three years ago, we got a three hundred thousand dollar grant through the state to get river access, uh, buying Tiltron property. Because of the length of time and because of some recent modifications to that plan, because of cost increases, we've modified the plan so we can get to the river. Uh, by focusing the work down at the river. And because of that, uh, the state has asked us to modify and update, uh, this resolution, so. Certification will be signed by Michael, uh, but we need to do the resolution, uh, that's in the middle between the certification and, and witness up, so. This just allows us to use the funds and make the changes that we're doing, um. That's.
Oh, we're, is that because we're, we're doing the order of the actual work?
So, yeah, so that's a good question. So initially, um, the, the initial. Grant was we're building a, a parking lot right off of Airline Avenue and a path right down to the beginning of the woods. Um, but because of, um, the timeframe. Um, we've asked them to allow us to modify it so we can do most of the work down near the river so we can actually get access. Part of the reason is, uh, we can now park where the baseball field used to be anyways, so we can use that as parking anyways. Uh, it's perfectly fine to drive between the front, through the fence we're going to put up to the end, but we're, we're focusing our effort at the end of the trail, so it gives us access. The old plan would have, would not. The old plan would have, would not have provided access to the river at all. Um, it would have just gotten us to the beginning of the woods, but no river access truly. So, since the intent was when they did the, when they did the, a grant back then was to give us river access, um, they didn't realize that, uh, they thought there'd be enough money to be able to go, maybe go beyond that at all. Uh, we told them that wasn't going to be possible. Um, so because of that, we re-altered the plan. We're going to put a parking lot closer to the river, make sure we get the road going down that incline. Um, and, uh, we'll be able to have river access, um, with the new plan. So, Dee, or, uh, Julie from Deep is on board with that. She just said we need to change, uh, this in order to make that happen. So we've got to update the paperwork, so. But yes, and we've already, uh, we're expecting bids on this, um, August, August fourteenth, so about a week and a half, we'll have some, uh, we'll have bids on this thing come in. We had to have had, I think it was eighteen or nineteen contractors showed up to the question and answer session on this, which is the largest, uh, number of contracts they've had for any, any question on a bid. So, and a number of local folks too, uh, that bid on that. So, uh, we're hoping to find a good vendor that, you know, within a couple of days of August fourteenth, uh, and then work with them to try to get as much as we can done with the three, well, it'll end up being about two hundred fifty thousand dollars left. By the time we do the fence and some of the engineering, but either way, we're trying to get as much done as we can. So, and it requires us to update this so that their paperwork's all over so we can get paid, uh, the grant money, which keeps Tom happy and keeps money coming into the coffers. So.
It keeps us all happy.
It keeps everybody happy. When Thomas is happy, everybody's happy. So, uh, anyway, so any other questions on this?
Yeah, it's good.
Excellent. Um, if someone wants, they can read the whole thing, but the important part is the resolve that the Town of Portland may enter into is the important part. That's what we're going to. You were ready to go.
You've worked on this project.
That project.
Yes, sir.
You want me to read the whole thing?
It says resolve.
Yeah, let's start with the header.
Start with the header and then go to resolve.
Okay.
And then Mike is going to, yeah.
All right. Authorized resolution of the Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, August sixth, two thousand twenty five. Resolve that the Town of Portland may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate for a grant of three hundred thousand dollars for the Portland Riverfront Park and Trail Project on a parcel of land adjacent to Airline Avenue. And be it further resolved that Michael A. Pelton as first selectman of the Town of Portland is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Portland and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that.
Right, discussion. Uh, part of the reason also is, uh, Ryan, uh, probably gets the one that signed the original one. So they also needed enough big signature from the new town officials. So that's another reason they asked for that.
Well, I'll just say this, Mike, since you've been first selectman, we've gotten more done in, uh, six months than we got done in six years. So, kudos to you for all your effort that you've put into, I'm granted, bringing it all together.
Right.
So we could get off the diving board.
No, I appreciate that.
There was a foundation there, but yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of work done for me. I, I, I got the easier part, just getting the last couple things.
Yeah, but we needed, we needed you at the bully pulpit to push us over the top.
Thank you, thank you. All right, without further discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, the next one is a newer one we had to add because of a recent situation. Um, we're asking for a bid waiver on an important piece of equipment, an excavator that's needed by the highway department. Um, I don't have Mike here today, um, to give you a more of a detailed explanation, but what he has said is, um, it's a needed piece of equipment. Uh, we have at least thirty thousand dollars in the budget, so it's budgeted. It's not additional funds that we have to do. Um, and because of issues with the, uh, previous piece of equipment, um, not working, that they need something to make. Yeah, please do.
I believe this is the mulching head for the excavator. So the excavator, we bought an excavator a few years ago. Uh, Volvo excavator, Tyler, uh, equipment. Um, they need to do the mulching head. Tyler Equipment will not, uh, put somebody else's equipment on the, on the piece of equipment. Uh, we have a, uh, extended warranty on the piece of equipment. So we need Tyler to put the equipment on it. We need to have it match the piece of equipment and, um, that's why we need to do the bid waiver because we need to more or less buy it from Tyler to add it on to the, the people that are the local, uh, Volvo dealer that in the area that they only, uh, people within Connecticut that will work on that. Based on the, um, Volvo, uh, so the piece of equipment is not, the, uh, the attachment's not Volvo, but the piece of equipment being a Volvo, do they authorize dealer to work on the Volvo? So they, so you have to buy the, uh, piece of equipment from them to put on the machine. So that's what we're doing.
This price is in line with other.
Yeah.
Models. So we're not paying more just for this.
To my knowledge, based on what I've heard from the guys, it's, it's right within the line of where it would be and, you know, I mean, that's what we, it's, it's a little bit, I think the, uh, amount is slightly under what we budgeted. But it's, uh, so that means that's where they were expecting it to be and we had to put additional monies in this year's budget to get to over the hump. So, uh, that's what they're trying to accomplish. And, you know, the, kind of the longer we wait, uh, this kind of keeps creeping up. So probably need, you know, to, if we're, uh, achieve this goal on this piece of equipment, this would be the route. So, so, you know, like I told, uh, the Public Works team, if, you know, kind of we try to buy this, you know, from this certain company, uh, you know, when you're making the initial acquisition, try to make the initial acquisition with as much of what you anticipate to require. Uh, then you're allowed, you know, you'll be able to get more or less the source well consortium pricing, um, right off the top. And then, uh, that, that's all inclusive. And then you can then get your extended warranty on all the components. So it's hard. It's hard to know exactly what you're going to need always. Um, so, uh, this is one of those ones where I go, wow, this, uh, will work well allegedly on this piece of equipment. And so that, uh, this is how that all will work out. So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Rights. All right, so I'd like to read this.
So we, is this something you would want to read the whole thing again or?
It's, yeah, I think you have. We can just waive it. Oh.
Yeah, I was going to say, we could just, you know.
Give it, I don't mind.
How about just a, how about, um?
I don't think, so I don't believe we have to read it.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll just make a motion that we adopt the resolution dated August sixth, twenty twenty five, titled, request for waiver of bid requirements for Tyler Equipment Corporation, um, you know, as presented.
I'll stick on that.
Sticking it?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? Uh, like this one. All those in favor? Uh, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Tom, thank you for the, uh, explanation on that.
Yeah, we appreciate that. All right, uh, next one I added as well, uh, number, uh, number twelve is for a, um, a power-up drug and alcohol education workshop is going to be done at the high school and middle school on September fifteenth and September eighteenth. Uh, this will be the first use of opioid funds that the town gets, um, since I've been doing this here. Tom, um, I know we had. Having a lot of it. This seems like a big spend. Okay, there you go. Thank you, Tom, for correcting that. Um, but we're going to be using sixteen thousand dollars of it for an event that's going to be held at the high school. Um, Courtney, our, uh, youth services director has, um, is very familiar with these folks. They've done some different events in the area, to pass some information out. It's being done by a gentleman, basketball player from a while ago, that was, uh, hooked on alcohol, uh, affected his life and now he's kind of out there, uh, beating the bushes, telling people what, what to do, how to stay sober, how to deal with these kinds of pressures out there. Evidently puts on a wonderful workshop with not only the students, but also the parents. Um, so, um, I'd like to, um, it doesn't require, um, doesn't require, check. I guess, I guess I'm just looking for a motion for you guys, uh, to say that you approve. Doesn't require, but I think it's important because it is a substantial amount that we're spending and it can only, you can only spend this money on activities like this.
I'll make, I'll make the motion and we approve the funds for this program.
Okay, you know, so.
Do we, how much is?
Seen anything about.
Oh, it's sixteen thousand dollars and it covers, we'll read that, pass it around and.
And do we have the money budgeted or where, where are we getting the money?
It's for, so we get every, every year we get, um, opioid funds. That it's positive, it can only be spent on, on specific things. The list you have right there represents the specific things. Uh, right now, if I'm not mistaken, Tom, I think we have over sixty thousand dollars in there. I think that's the last number I saw.
Okay.
But.
So they do a parent program?
Yeah, they do a parent program. Um, I spoke it to, um, the school, um, principals, uh, as well as Charles are very familiar with it. They are very enthusiastic about this. It engages not only the middle school students, but the high school students and the parents. Uh, it, it, um, I'll be speaking up part of it. Um, I encourage the other selectmen to come there and, uh, and attend it if you can. Uh, but it is something that's, that's geared at the kids and, and helping them with peer pressure and, and making better decisions. But, but because it is, um, because we can only use this money for events like this, um, I thought it was a good use of it.
So the, so we get a, we get a, throughout the opioid settlement for various manufacturers, we get money periodically that comes in. And we have it in the Fund eighty-four, there's a, a fund called the Opioid Settlement. Monies and those monies come in and there's the, in the settlement, there's, I don't know, maybe like an eight-page document that tells you um, all the things that you could use it for. And this is one of those, uh, allowed uh, appropriate activities that were in it. It seems like the Board of Ed, uh, personnel with the, so the youth service personnel kind of spearheads it. They kind of oversee the funds. Um, they've connected with the school system and, uh, it, uh, kind of did a research to determine how this would all work and, and the appropriateness of that. Then, uh, then that got all kind of funneled through the superintendent to Michael and, um, you know, kind of that, then kind of going now to you all to say, you know, this seems like a reasonably good use of, of those funds. But, uh, that's how the, the money comes about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Good, are you all? So we have an option in a second?
Yeah, but, um. Bob, Bob made it. I think I seconded.
Okay, so Bob made you second it, um, for the discussion?
I think it sounds great. That's, yeah.
Well, you, you'll remember Tim when we were on Board of Ed talking about, should we be bringing Narcan in? So.
I know.
This is good to see progress.
Yeah.
And that is one of the uses that we can, we can use this for as well. A lot of towns will use that to supply their police and fire. That's, so, all right, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstention? Thank you very much. Yeah, I think it's a very good use of funds as well. All right, um, number thirteen, appointments to boards and commissions.
Uh, we have a couple tonight. Uh, our first one is Michelle Donahue for the Senior Citizen Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
I was going to say, I'll second it.
Right. Further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Uh, next we have Chris Donahue as alternate on the Plan of Conservation and Development.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
And last we have Rebecca Esme for Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
What, what do we decide? Are we, are we going to hold off on the other one until we clarify the language or?
I think what the language said is that they shall be invited, which, so it doesn't, I mean, certainly the intention was to have somebody on.
Right, that, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Well, let's talk about it and we can put it on next meeting.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, yeah, just because you'd have somebody who, a position that's supposed to be there that may not get sat, right?
Right.
So we just want to make sure we do it right so we can just do it one time. So let's figure it out and we'll bring it back the next few weeks.
Yep, that sounds good. I'm, I'm all for that. All right, it looks like we have no refunds of excess payments. That's great. Uh, status supports. Who wants to start? Do you have anything at your end?
Um, well, unfortunately, I was not able to go to the last water and sewer, I think, but I think the.
We talked about it last meeting.
Yeah, I think that the only current update is we're waiting for a permit. Um, and once we get the permit from Deep, then we can run the five-day test. And I think the only other, the most recent update I got was that the water quality came back, you know, very good. The only possible, um, the only possible thing that we might have to do is, is just address some slight hardness, but everything else looked really, really good. So.
And there's a meeting Monday.
That's, that's coming Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Water. Good. Which I promise not to get sick of COVID or anything like that, so I can just.
Uh, let's see. River Access Committee is going to meet next Tuesday. And, um, you know, things are moving forward as Mike mentioned earlier. Um, we've got the fence company procured. Um, we're going to be opening bids on August fourteenth.
Fourteenth, yeah.
Um, we're also going to sign up the committee for the last weekend in September. There's a Connecticut River Conservancy Source to See Cleanup along the river. It's all four states that border the river and New England participate. They make a big deal out of it. We participated last year and we picked up over four hundred pounds of trash. Um, the hope this year is that maybe we can get the road at least partially cut so we could get down there with a vehicle, um. C R C's offered to give us a dumpster if we want it. So we got to, we got time to talk about if, if we want their dumpster or not. Um, and they would pay for it. And, um, but they, they were anxious to help us get, there's an old campsite down very close to the water and it's got, we've cleaned up about as much of it as we can. Now it's got some heavy, heavy stuff, old window frames and an old canoe. Um, so the hope is maybe be able to tack that in September.
Good. So, I'll, I'll come up there with you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we had a good, we actually had a good turnout last year, so, um.
Yeah, we had a lot though.
Yeah, we can, you know, make some noise about that at the beginning of September, let people know.
I think it'd be a great project.
I'll, I'll get the dates. I'm going to sign us up.
Yeah.
And I'll get the exact dates and stuff for the next meeting.
That's great. You done your end?
Uh, no, planning and zoning is tomorrow and capital is not for a few months.
And library board didn't hold their meeting this month and, um, I wasn't available for the senior services of advisory, that's away.
Oh, there you go. Easy, very good. All right, next, uh, public comment. Any public comment out there? Anything online? Quiet, huh? All right, um, general informal discussion. It just had a couple of things and then we can, some follow-up items. Um, I already passed down the notice about the River Access, um, opening bids. We'll, we'll have the opening on, on August fourteenth, I think eleven A M. We have it. On August nineteenth at eleven A M., we have the Connectivity Grant bid opening. So we have that out to bid right now. Uh, we'll see how many bids we get, but that's for the sidewalk project. So that's coming up. I'll remind everyone, I'll send the dates up. You guys are. It's, uh, August nineteenth, eleven A M. And then on the same day, August nineteenth at two P M., we also have a, um, uh, the same opening for bids on the net metering, uh, solar project that the town is applying for. So we put something out, out, out on that. Um, but those are the three that are up right now. Um, I will send something to everyone here at the board, reminding them of the dates as it come up, so that you guys can, can be there if you want to. So that is happening. Two fifty committee, I went to the last meeting. They are, they are kind of ready to go. Um, they're already trying to raise funds. They, they did the close to ten thousand dollars on the fundraiser before, but they are anxious to start doing things also with, uh, with the, uh, two fifty committee in Middletown, which has not been formally set up. They are anxious to start doing things also with uh, with the uh, two fifty committee in Middletown, which has not been formally set up and confirmed yet, so. I spoke with uh, Mayor Nacera. And uh, they're gonna set up soon and then get those two together, but there's a lot of energy on that committee to do things. Uh, they're posting a number, a number of activities now uh, online on social media, you know, events that have happened to a hundred and fifty years ago leading up to it, so. Again, it's a good committee, lots of, lots of pushback. I believe one of our, one of our folks from the committees out in the audience there right now, Sarah, so. Um, Sarah, did you want to say anything about the committee? Anything that you want to let these folks know? If you, if you want, what's that?
She brought, we, we found a copy online.
Oh, we did find one, yes. We did find one, yes. If you want to say something, you can, but there you go. I know you would. Um. Well, project, um. We are waiting for the state now to give us a permit to do the five day pump test. Uh, as Jim said, the water quality for the last is excellent, no PFAS. Um, we are actively uh, discussing transition um, with the MDC. As, as we had said before, right now, we're looking for two additional years. And that's what we're looking at, at getting done with the existing plan we have right now. Um, there'll be more discussion about this in the weeks ahead. Um, but uh, we're looking to move that project forward quicker once we do the five day test, so that, that should, a lot of things should spring from that.
So we would need to try and get an extension of the current water.
Yes.
Two years with them?
Yes, we, we've already spoken to them about it on two meetings, three meetings. The last meeting, we got into more specifics. We had our, our town attorney on there along with another attorney that's an expert with these folks. Uh, Joe, so we uh, we, we gave them what our ask is, which is two years uh, additional starting in January under the existing plan. The contract ends uh, on, in January of, of next year. However, we have a, a water, uh, a water diversion permit that's between both of us, so. We have to mutually agree to whatever uh, we're gonna do going forward.
I think we extended that for, I want to say, like, the thirty years or.
Yeah, it's, it's one of, it's like the twenty, forty, six.
It goes out until, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're, you know, we're on track. We're, we're negotiating with them and talking about the details. Uh, I'll let you know when the next meeting is, if any of the selectmen want to be part of that, um, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure I include you in on that, but. Uh, that's the ask, uh, that's the best estimate for how long it'll take us uh, to get this well up and running and all the infrastructure built in order to connect it to our system.
So I'll let you know right now, I, I will be in that meeting.
Yes.
While we're talking about water.
As I let them know, I will be in that meeting, so.
The current town well, is that back online yet?
No, there's still, uh, we had, we had an issue with the, with the pump and with the, with. Uh, the equipment there. It is not up yet. We're, we're actually pulling up all of our water right now from MDC, so having that as a backup. In case something happens, it's important, we're not gonna lose or disconnect from MDC. Uh, we'll always have them as a backup. Uh, that's the plan, but right now they're supplying us with the water that we need. Um, I expect. Uh, we'll have the uh, the well there up and running within a week or two, uh, based on the equipment and what the, what the timing is, so.
How long has it been down though?
At least two weeks, at least two weeks, so.
What, um. How was the spirit of the meetings with MDC?
Meeting one, I think, was, was, um, was tense. They were looking for answers. Uh, they were pushing their point. Um, they uh, they were kind of dictating terms of, of what they were looking for. Um, second meeting and third meeting, I think, were much more balanced because we got an idea of what we wanted to ask for, uh, what, what are, am I, am I?
I would, I would say meeting, meeting, and I'm gonna use improper English to drive the point home, meeting two was tensor. Um, and.
That's a, additionally.
But meeting, meeting three, we had a couple of the points that they made in meeting two. And um, we made sure we had, were on solid footing with our attorneys and were able to address them, so.
And, and ultimately what we told them also.
Helped, that helped bring some balance in on that.
No, it did. And, and I think, I think the second meeting, we also acknowledged that MDC does have some concerns. You know, they need to sell water. I mean, they have some issues that we wanted to acknowledge, uh, but it needs to fit into what Portland does. It needs to be. Uh, you know, what, what's in the best interest of our town. Um, so you know, uh, you know, both, both sides are trying to get the self-interest. Uh, you know, positioned as much as possible, but we, uh, I, I anticipate the next meeting will be uh, more productive because we'll have more details to talk about, so. But that's, uh, that's what, and again, I'll keep everyone posted on what's happening with that as well. Um. So over the last week or so, I've gotten a number of calls on the project on High Street. I think I would kind of address it tonight a little bit. Uh, I don't want to go into a lot of details because I, I know some of you I've talked um, out of the meeting, but uh, we've had some residents uh, up on High Street and near there. Um, offer complaints about, um, how dirty the project is, traffic flow around there, et cetera. Uh, as soon as I heard it, I tried to address each one of the points uh, with not only the police but also with. Uh, with our folks that are on the job supervising as well as with Birmingham uh, directly. Uh, they did respond um, quickly on. On most of it, but there's been a couple reoccurring issues that, that uh, made me concerned. Um. Uh, they're being addressed right now. Uh, for those residents that live on or near High Street, uh, they have finished up for now the work that they were. Uh, scheduled to do. We are looking at extending the work that they do uh, in another week or two, but we're waiting for the Department of Transportation to give us permission. To use up some of the excess funds that we haven't spent yet. Um, if we can get them to approve that, then we probably get another. Two hundred thousand dollars with the work from these folks, but we want to make sure before they do any more work. You know, starting in a week or two, that they conform to all of the requirements that we expect in terms of keeping it clean, making sure all, everything's done properly, et cetera. So uh, right now it's in a holding pattern. There won't be anything uh, done on that project for the next week and a half. I think the earliest they could come back is August fifteenth or August sixteenth. Uh, but again, we're waiting for DOT to give us permission to be able to use the funds. If we don't use the remaining grant funds, uh, let's say, um. They don't approve it, then we have to give back the funds that we're not spending and there's, I believe, approximately two hundred thousand dollars of grant money that we could spend to do more, so. Uh, these, these folks have done the work quicker and less costly, albeit a little messier and with some concerns. Uh, but we're hoping that, um, if DOT does approve it, we'll be able to uh, to make sure the rest of it's done up to the standards that we expect. So, that's where we're at with that.
Mike, is there concern about um, them working up there when school starts?
So. Um, yes, that is an issue. We were trying to get it done before then, which is why they're shooting for the fifteenth. They think they can get another two weeks with the work done before school starts, and that's kind of the beat the clock timing that they're trying to do. Uh, which is why we're pushing DOT to let us know. Ryan's on it. Um, our, our soon to be new public works director. Uh, is also, um, which will be something else I'll say, uh, is, is also aware of what's going on. We're already, we're already talking about that, but yes, we're, we're looking to get that done. It has to be done before school starts, uh, traffic patterns, traffic up there, et cetera, has to be done, so. So timing is a big issue, so it's, it's all being worked on right now. Any questions at all?
Um, I have a side note off of that. We talked about them doing the crack ceiling at the high school and middle school.
Yes.
That much was done.
Yeah. They, the way, the way that Mike and Bob did it was uh, Bob provided the material and then, and then Mike and his, and his crew uh, used up all the material they, they had. They didn't purchase another pound or two of that. That's where it stopped for other projects. I think part of it was. Um, just they had to move on to other projects. We're about to start the chip ceiling soon, so there were other reasons that they had and the timing. Where school starts also added to it, but I think you're right, though. I think, um, we need to plan better next year especially. Um, when we really look at the whole program, and I'd actually invite any of the selectmen, maybe uh, we could be. Uh, invite, we can put a small committee together to make sure that we get that done and, and make it, uh, you know, get more of the crack ceiling done next year during the summer season. You know, or during vacation time.
I thought we, um, didn't we have a presentation where somebody came down from Worcester and?
Yeah.
Yeah, weren't we going with that?
They, they did not, uh, they did not go with those folks. They, they did it internally. They did it, uh, you know, Mike, uh, because we have a machine that we use. Um, so uh, the deal was a Board of Ed side would provide the material and our side would kind of do the work, so I think we could do it better next year. Um, so.
So we tried to save some money.
Yeah, but next year might be too late in certain areas, because that parking lot is in horrible condition. Yeah.
And it's just gonna be the same thing of kicking the can down the road and next year, next year, next year.
Yeah.
If. May, maybe we need to look at getting a quote from a contractor to say, what is it to finish the job?
Right. Right.
I agree with that.
Well, the other thing is you can chip seal. I, I don't know, maybe when school's in session, it's, it's gonna be a mess, but. I mean, you can chip seal till, you know, October, November. I'm not chip sealed, uh, crack.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, right, sorry. But um, there's, there's time on the calendar unless the opening of school is gonna mess it all up.
Um, what, what I'll do is I'll arrange a, um. I'll, I'll arrange a sit down uh, with, uh, with, with our highway supervisor and, and the folks there. Uh, if anyone here wants to participate, Bob, if you want to be part of that?
Sure.
Um, I think that's worthwhile. Mike, if you want to be involved in that as well?
Depending on when it is, yeah.
Okay, of course. I'll try to work around the schedule.
Just give us as much notice.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and listen, I. I, I've spoken to all of you individually. I mean, any project like that you see that needs more attention, I welcome the help and the input. Um, you know, I'm doing everything I can, but there are projects that need extra time and extra expertise and there's people. Everyone on this board has extra skills or passions about the project, water, trail, et cetera, uh, so I welcome that. So anytime everyone's got my contact, stop by. Um, I want to push as much forward as I can, so I welcome any, any assistance or help. Um, doesn't have to be just at these meetings, you know, reach out anytime and I'd love to get as much done as possible. You know, we've got a lot of work to do. Yeah, we got a lot of stuff going on, but uh, the more hands, the better, so. I appreciate it. I appreciate any input like this. Um, that's all I have. Except. Our new public works director, um.
Oh, yeah, tell us about him.
I, so, uh, gentleman's name, uh, Jason Morocco, uh, from Bristol. He's already given his notice over there. His start date is August eighteenth. Um, he is, uh, I've, I've spoken to him dozen times, met with him a number of times. Uh, he came out on Sunday and met with Ryan, met with Mike, uh, went up to the project up on High Street. Um, we've been, we've been talking to him since we, uh, we, we first met uh, about what's going on in the town. Uh, he's leaving a town where he's put eighteen years there, um, and he's ready for another adventure, uh, and put his roots down, so. I, I think he's gonna do a great job. Um, at the meeting, at the next meeting, the twentieth, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, I'll, I'll be inviting Jason down uh, to introduce himself to all of you here. Um. If you guys want to meet him on that day, the start date, just let me know. Uh, you guys are welcome to come down to the town hall, but uh, it's a position that has been much needed. Uh, Ryan will help her and I have to give him a shout out. Uh, he was our previous public works director. He has been fantastic in terms of helping out. Um, when, when he can. He has another position now, but he helps out nights, weekends. Uh, if I call him during the daytime, he's very responsive, so. He has pushed through and helped greatly a number of these projects as he started these. Um, so it has been incredibly helpful. Uh, Tom has done a lot of work to, to maintain the public works director position. I've done a lot of work over the last uh, seven months, stay on top of all this. It's a ton of things happening, um, but it's gonna be great having him in. It's gonna be a couple months before it gets up and running completely, but he's. Already got a running start with what we've done with them in terms of, you know, filling in what we have going on, so. Um, again, I'm excited about it. I think it's, it's a position, position we need, especially with all the activities happening, so.
Um, are we gonna still have of, uh, access to Ryan or helpern?
Yes.
Our time or occasionally?
What, what Ryan has said is, um, he will stay as long as we need him. Um, to not only help train him, but also to work with anything that comes up, so he's available at the end of the phone, uh, should we need him. Um, so that's great. That's great. And it's really helpful. So again, I, I gotta give him a shout out. He uh, he's still uh. He still is a hundred percent behind. He, he knows the project intimately. He's, he's connected with the grants and all levels of, of what we do, so. Uh, very helpful on that, so uh, that, that bodes well, uh, and uh, I'm looking forward to that happening, so.
He's a class.
He's a class guy.
Yeah.
Class guy.
Absolutely.
So, I gotta tell you though, it does, and to Bobby's point earlier, it does now give you more time to focus on projects like cracks and, and making sure that I don't let things slip through. Um, there's only a thousand things that come up every week that need to get done in town, so this will help me deal with at least enough.
I was gonna say, this, this will help our.
Did you just say that?
I did.
This will help our highway supervisor as well, who's been doing double duty.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah, it's gonna.
Mike, Mike, yeah.
It's gonna clear the.
Mike is very, very happy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, so, um, I, I, I don't want to go through the whole list of, of his background, but good guy, it's gonna be helpful. Um, next meeting, uh, you'll get a chance to meet him and I'll have him kind of talk to you more about what, what he's doing and the whole bit, so. Uh, anyway, so that, that's my exciting news of the day. Um. Follow up items, um. I, I wanted to put something on the ethics ordinance because I've been looking at, um. The charter I've been looking at, the ordinances, whatever, and I really want to tackle that. Um, that's one of those things. That I've been meaning to get to, but I just, everything else is kind of taking time up on that. Um, how would this? How, how does everyone here want to go forward with that? Do you want to put this as something we, we tackle and meet in a special session in September? Um, do you want to put this on the agenda two weeks from now and just tackle this and take it in majority? How does this group want to go forward with that? Because I think we need to look at that and.
What, what do we anticipate coming at us from, we're, we're gonna have a special meeting with the Board of Education? And then we, what are we anticipating is gonna come out of that that we're gonna have to. Address, right? That's, that's almost gonna be a priority. We need to get that.
Right.
So why don't we talk about ethics at our next meeting and that'll be before the special meeting?
I think it's a great idea.
Can you, what are we doing with? Are we, like, what's on the?
Update the statue?
Well, and, and actually, what, what should have been on here, but didn't make, was also, um, just our charter as well, like the charter review.
Right, right.
Um, but that was, that was.
Noticeably absent.
Yes, and it was, it was a mistake.
Oh.
So it was, so I can't bring it up officially, but, um, but yes, I think, but it was that and the charter, so.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, so I, I agree. I think it's a good idea. So the twentieth, uh, let's make that a focus. Um. I'll, I'll, I'll make sure they're, make sure it's emailed out to everyone.
This is ethics on the twentieth?
And what I will, what I will do is I will add a charter as well.
Okay, that's, that's a long, that's multiple.
At least we, yeah, well, we'll get that started. What I'm hoping everyone does between now and then is read it and highlight your, your book. As the ones that are concerned. I think most of it's gonna be, um, no issues, but there'll be some things in there that will catch people's attention. I've already gone through mine. And I have probably a half a dozen highlighted items that I think I want to bring up, but, um, for the most. For, for the, for the, for the charter.
Sure.
Yes, I'm sorry, for the charter. I know I'm bouncing back and forth, but, uh, but I said we, we look at both of those, but if everyone can look at theirs. With the twentieth meeting, I think we should just at least have a discussion about what are the things that stand out for you? And then we can see what we do from there.
Okay, all right, all right, make a motion we adjourn.
Uh, no, actually.
Executive session.
Make a motion we go in the executive session.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
First, we have to say the purpose for the purpose.
Oh, yes.
The.
Second, the special. Contract renewal lease of town owned land. All right, all those in favor again?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? All right, passes. All rights.